Good evening and welcome. This is the February 26, 2024 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, we ask that everyone remain calm and exit through the double doors to the parking lot located in the front corner of this building. If the doors are blocked, please exit through the door to my right by pulling the fire alarm located to the right of the door under the monitor. Please let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we ask that everyone please silence yourself first. If you plan to speak during the public comments portion at the end of this meeting, please fill out a form on the table near the door you came in and give it to the city clerk. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Bill Reed of Parkway Church of God forward to provide the city invocation.
Thank you for this opportunity. Lord, we come to you tonight with awe and reverence and amazement. You are a great God that loves us, you care for us, you want to lead and to guide us. Thank you for your leadership and your direction. In these challenging times, we thank you that we can come to you for guidance and direction. Thank you, Father, for the City of Salisbury Council. We thank you for the men and women that you have chosen to lead this city. We thank you for the skills and the abilities that you've given to each council person. As they carry on the business of the city, we ask for you to give them your guidance and your direction. Only you know the future, and we are dependent upon you for your direction for Salisbury. Your word says that the steps of a good man, a woman, or order the Lord. Guide this council as they seek the best direction for Salisbury. Direct every decision that will be best for the people of Salisbury. We pray as Jesus prayed, not our will be done, but your will be done. Thank you, Lord, for this council. Thank you for your direction. Thank you for the future that you are laying out for Salisbury, and we ask these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, and amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Reed. I would like to now call for a moment of silent meditation in memory of Dr. Nevins Todd, age 91, who passed away on February 18th. Dr. Todd made a lasting impact on this community, which he loved so much. Our sympathies go out to his sweetheart of 65 years, Joanne, and children Nevins, William, and Sheriann, and his six grandchildren. Could I have a motion to adopt the legislative agenda?
Salute.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Salute.
Second.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On the consent agenda, we have the February 5, 2024 Work Session Minutes. There are two appointments to the Youth Development Advisory Committee, both for terms ending February 2027. They are Resolution Number 3328 approving the appointment of Emily Zeriner and Resolution Number 3329 approving the appointment of James Heeson. There are two appointments to the Parks and Recreation Committee, both for terms ending February 2027. They include Resolution Number 3330 approving the appointment of Benjamin Stewart and Resolution Number 3331 approving the appointment of Linda Roskovich. And there is Resolution Number 3332 approving the reappointment of James Mayberry to the Zoo Commission for term ending February 2027. Thank you.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Are there any members who are being reappointed, present or on Zoom? I see Ben Stewart, who is joining the Parks and Recreation Committee. We appreciate you. Thank you so much for your service. We look forward to the work you're going to do.
Aye.
Thank you.
You have Emily online.
And I believe, so Emily, thank you so much for joining the Youth Development Advisory Committee. We appreciate the work you're going to do and look forward to the impact that you'll make. Thank you so much. Could I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2855 for second reading?
Salute.
Second.
Good evening, Ms. Boucher.
Good evening, everyone. Ordinance number 2855, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing a budget amendment to reallocate $149,000 from the Main Street Master Plan Project to serve as a local match to the Transportation Alternative Program Salisbury Citywide Bike Ways Design Project. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2855 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2856 for second reading?
Salute.
Second.
Ordinance number 2856, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore for the purpose of accepting grant funds and the amount of $1,500 and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for the Salisbury Wycomico Integrated First Care Team referred to as SWIFT. This is before you also for second reading, no changes or amendments.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2856 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2857 for second reading?
Salute.
Second.
Ordinance number 2857, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend Chapter 15.24 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Housing Standards to Clarify Fire and Life Safety Provisions Regarding the Fire Marshal and this Code. This is also before you for second reading, no changes or amendments.
Thank you. All those in favor of ordinance number 2857 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2858 for first reading?
Salute.
Second.
Ordinance number 2858, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2024 General Fund Budget to appropriate funds to the Salisbury Zoo, whereas the Salisbury Zoo has experienced significant equipment and facility failures resulting in an unexpected shortfall in operating funds, and whereas these emergency repairs were necessary to keep animals alive during below-average temperatures and heavy rains. And whereas the Salisbury Zoo has a buildings account budget currently at $729.16 for the remainder of FY 2024, and whereas the Salisbury Zoo falling under the Department of Arts Business and Culture has estimated $50,000 would be required for the remainder of FY 2024 to properly maintain operations and provide routine exhibit maintenance and seeks a budget amendment as set forth below, and whereas this budget amendment as provided must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four fifths of the council. Section 1 of ordinance 2858 reads, "The City of Salisbury's fiscal year 2024 General Fund Budget B hereby is amended as follows: A) Increase the current year surplus account, which is 01-000-469810, by $50,000; and B) Increase the Salisbury Zoo's building account, which is account number 40000-534301, by that same amount, which is $50,000."
All those in favor of ordinance number 2858 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Boucher.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll enter the public comments portion of the agenda, and there's a reminder, you have four minutes, and I will call them in order of receipt. Molly, Molly Hilligoss, and again, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Molly Hilligoss. My residence is 141 North Park Drive, and I'm also the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity, and the President of the Wycomico Rotary Club, and a member of the NAACP and the Greater Salisbury Committee. So the reason for my public comment today is in support of the Zen City Pilot Program. I was very impressed that the council and the administration and mayor had put forth an innovative program that would provide much-needed data and analysis for not just your decision-making and strategic planning, but for the nonprofits and other organizations in the city. One of the challenges right now, obviously, is affordable housing. There, I'm on three separate housing task forces. Wouldn't it be amazing if the Zen City platform could take all the comments from, you know, all the different websites and social media platforms in all the different languages that are spoken here and consolidate that into something that's really tangible so we can determine what are the absolute key things that we need to be focusing on? Right now, the city has a tremendous asset with Jordan Ray and the communications team there. Unfortunately, they only speak English. Last I checked, AI can translate any language. AI doesn't call in sick. AI doesn't take a lunch break. AI works 24 hours a day figuring out what the needs are of this community. And I applaud Mayor Taylor and you, the council, for bringing forth that opportunity. It's clear that Salisbury is not blazing a trail here, but if we don't get on board, we will be left behind. And with that, thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing how you can put that pilot to good use and a good return on investment of my tax-paying dollars. Thank you.
Molly, thank you so much for your comment. We appreciate the work you do in the community as well. Lisa Gingrich?
Hi, Lisa Gingrich, 316 North Division Street. I want to make a general comment, since there's a budget item for a pretty hefty amount of money, that when you have matching funds and grants, it does not free money. Some taxpayer in the state of Maryland has paid into that money, and there should be a real responsibility to how that is spent. And there's a fiduciary relationship, means a person in a group, usually in a position of vulnerability, vests confidence, good faith, reliance, and trust in others for their aid, advice, protection. This requires the fiduciary to act with the duty of loyalty for the sole benefit and interest of the ones who entrusted them with this power and property. That's the benefit of the people who entrusted them, not what they think should be done versus asking people. Are there platforms that could help get more of a sampling of what's going on? I'm sure there are. I think that there needs to be more input from people. This is a very lackadaisical city as far as commenting. I don't know how to solve that. That's not my expertise. But, you know, again, these people, you all have specialized knowledge, power, access, and we just all want to be able to, you know, live our lives and not wondering, you know, what's new, what's next, what are you going to ruin this time, and using the taxpayers of Maryland as your ATM. So that's my general comment, and I hope that you guys take that to heart every time you think of spending $150,000 for a total of $300,000 on something. It's a lot of money, and is that the best place to spend it, whether it's this project or any other project? Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Dean?
My name is Jeff Dean. I live on Middle Boulevard in Salisbury. I'm here for my twice-monthly update on the recovery housing conversation, which is limited to this basically right now. A month ago, City Administrator Andy Kitzro offered to meet with me and Miraboda. That did not happen. Two weeks ago, he offered to have a meeting with me, Miraboda, Councilwoman DeShiel, and council, and the mayor. He and I stood in this room for an hour after the last meeting talking. He made me a lot of promises and commitments. Haven't heard a word from him. He has claimed that the city is complaint-driven when it comes to HCDD, and I disagree with that because I have applied for permits for building in the past, and in that process, it generates a whole list of other permits that are required. I say that because 311 Middle Boulevard, here's my complaint, if this is complaint-driven, here's my complaint. 311 Middle Boulevard has had an exterior renovation within the historic district without a historic permit, historic renovation permit. It's the fourth time I've said it in this meeting. I'm saying it again. Here's an official complaint. If it's complaint-driven, please address it. There is no excuse for this, and the only mitigation of this is to remove the exterior, at this point, is to remove the exterior renovation. Specifically, I am referring to the fire department connection for the commercial fire suppression system that was installed to turn this residential home into a Level 3.1 recovery home. It has FDC sign on the outside, and it has a big exterior inlet for a fire engine to hook up to. There was no historic commission permit, there was no yellow placard in the yard, and there was no public comment allowed, or there was no public comment invited because there was no permit. I confirmed that, by the way, with Andy, and so I don't understand what the city's excuse is for not acting on this violation. I unknowingly violated historic commission permitting when I very first moved in and built a nine-foot of a fence, and I got a $600 fine and a criminal summons. And my across-the-street neighbor did an emergency repair during superstorm of Sandy and had a $3,000 bill, mitigation bill, from the historic district because he put the wrong windows in his house, same street. So now we have a commercial interest from out of town doing an external renovation on a home in the historic district. I've said it four or five times in public, I've said it 20 times in private, clearly, clearly, intentionally ignoring this complaint. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, is it Dan Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you.
I live on South Clermont Boulevard here in Salisbury, and I want to talk about the ordinance number 2855. I'm not here to advocate for or against this particular expenditure of money, but what I wanted to do was to remind the council that the bike way plan was developed by the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee back in 2017. And in 2017, that committee identified four groups of people in the City of Salisbury, strong and fearless bikers, which are 4% of the population, enthused and confident bikers, which is 9% of the population, 31% of the population are never bikers, and then there's a people in the middle representing 56% of the population. This was the group that this, the committee identified as the purpose of developing the bike path. And so here we are about to spend some more money on this project, and the issue is revolved around, well, we're going to get grant money from the state, shouldn't we do it? I don't think that's the right question. Two years have gone by since this program has started. I think it's time to go back and say, okay, has this program achieved the objectives that were outlined in the original plan, which was getting people in that 56% group to go out and bike more? Now, I walk in this neighborhood, in this city. I'm a famous walker. Everyone in my neighborhood knows me and my dog because we walk about two hours a day, every single day, every season of the year. And I don't know what the answer to that is, but we're talking about spending a lot of money. I don't know if the program has been successful, but my own observation in 1,200 hours of walking the streets of Salisbury is in that two-year period in 1,200 hours, any day of the week, any time of the year, I have seen two bicyclists, just two. Now, I'm not saying that this has failed. I don't know if it's failed, but I think that the city and the council have an obligation before you spend our tax money, whether it's from the city or the state, to go back and say, is this program working? Is it achieving what it set out to do? And that's all I have to say. Oh, one more thing off topic. I do, I run the, I'm the coordinator of the internship program at the IDS Department at the Salisbury University, and I've had the pleasure to work with city staff internships, and I've worked with lots of companies and internships, and the City of Salisbury is by far the best internship provider that we have at the university. So thank you. Thank you for helping me teach my children. Thank you.
Thank you. Von Ziggers?
Von Ziggers, Fitzwater Street, Salisbury, Maryland. I too have questions concerning ordinance number 2855, and I'm just wondering if you can expound a bit upon the Main Street Master Plan Project that is being, the funds are being reallocated from? Can you give some idea of what's going to be on hold? Or is there something of that project that is going to be on hold in order to further the bike project? Oh, I shouldn't anticipate a response. I'm sorry, wasting time. Also, I'm wondering if the funds are going to be reallocated as perhaps in this fiscal budget or at some other future plan to continue the Main Street project, what have you? And I'm also wondering if included in this plan, you will take into consideration perhaps redoing some of the areas that have been put in stone? Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comments, we will move to administration and council comments. We'll start with administration.
One of the things I wanted to mention is, again, I think we're hard at work with regard to the bike way plan and reallocating those funds in a way that recognizes a need for bike paths, but not all the infrastructure associated with it, which I think is part of the challenge that we've experienced citywide. So to your point, we've heard you, I feel you, and I understand. I've felt the same way and have had for a couple of years now. But point two, I wanted to take off a little bit about what President, the council, Doughty said about Nevins Todd, Dr. Todd. I mean, Dr. Todd was a unique individual. He has given, his kids are both, he has two sons that are doctors, Billy and Nebby Jr., and has a daughter Sheri, but also has a grandkid, and his grandfather and father were both doctors. We're in a fifth generation at this point. He's probably the only doctor at the hospital who knew all of the surgeons since the founding of the hospital, because both his father and grandfather were doctors, and his grandfather, of course, was the founder. So I think at some point, I'd like to come back, because he was a heart surgeon, and do sort of a health heart day that committed to Dr. Todd, but I wanted to also extend my condolences to the family. I've literally known them since I was 10 or 11 years old, and they're super, super family, super great, and you will not make a more, you know, more of a gentleman than Dr. Todd. So that's all I wanted to say on that front.
Thank you. Moving on to council comments, we'll start with Councilwoman Gregory.
Yeah, I just wanted to put a plug in for the downtown fault for Business Alliance. They are currently collecting donations of empty eggs for an egg hunt that they are planning for March 23rd from 12 to 5 p.m. Their Spring Street Market is going to be going on. It's an effort to bring folks downtown, businesses there, so folks can see all the great offerings that our downtown businesses have, and also something for the kids to be able to go eat their egg hunting, which I know, my guys are no longer that size, but I know they always enjoy that. So bring your kids downtown, but if you're looking to help out, they can definitely use the donation of the plastic eggs.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman DeShiel?
Okay. I have a list tonight. Okay? Be patient. First of all, I'd like to thank Jeff and Lisa for the information they passed out at the last, over the last couple of meetings. There's a lot of, you know, food for thought in both of those. Lisa, the cover of Salisbury being the worst place is not what the article was about. I think it listed items in that article that we are trying really hard to address, and I appreciate your input from both of you on doing that. Also, I went on the trolley ride. Holy cow, that was so fun. On Friday morning, we went everywhere. We went to the housing, community development, and Muir gave us some information there. We went to the waterworks and Waste Management Connie was wonderful. And we went to Dan, who was dealing with the water we drink, and what Dan doesn't know doesn't need to be known because he just knew everything. Sam, thank you, at Field Ops. Jason at the fire department gave us a nice tour. And Milton, as you know, Chief Minshane, has, knows everything about the fire department, I mean, the police department that there is to know, and he was fabulous. And then we ended up here where Emily was so gracious to show everyone around here. I also attended last week the Salisbury Wycomico Metropolitan Planning Organization Council. So I'm on that. And they do feasibility studies that are requested, and it was fascinating because they presented the one that they had, that's in process right now, Brown Street in Fruitland, and it involves everything, streetlights, crossings, and it really, it was wonderful to see what had put, was put in a planning process and then see it come to fruition. And lastly, when I was talking about the Hands and Hearts Ending Homelessness Shelter and asking for anyone in the city that would like to, you know, use their department or, you know, solicit their department to supply a dinner, in one week's time, the city council and the city headquarters, under Angela Blake's guidance, is supplying a dinner for the homeless, and the fire department headquarters auxiliary has taken a night, the fire department administration office has taken a night, and the assistant chief and his group have taken a night. So the fire department has stepped up for three dinners. We still have a lot needing to be filled, so if you have any questions, you know where to find me.
Hey, don't forget the mayor.
You're included with Angela.
I'm kidding, I'm sorry.
Maybe you didn't know that yet.
Just saying.
I want that mac and cheese.
All right, let's do it.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman DeShiel. Councilwoman Jackson?
Good evening. I have an update from Parks and Rec, the Parks and Rec Commission. As they were doing a disc golf course, they found out that they weren't able to do that because of invasive species and flooding in that area, so they would not be able to do it in the park. They're trying to get some information from some experts from across the bridge in reference to the flooding and the invasive species of plants and things that are in the park. They also wanted to know how to get on the CIP, and I told them, I said, CIP, most of the people on the CIP are the parks or whatever divisions of the city. You get on there by the need, not the want, but the need. And if that park really needs something that is very demanding and it has to have And if that park really needs something that is very demanding and it has to have, then you will get on that CIP. And I also asked them to come to the meetings as well. They were discussing City Park Master Plan, areas of improvement. They discussed Chris Roberts Memorial Course, the Memorial Park at Beaver Dam Park. Let me see, I wrote them down. And they wanted to know when the lighting in the park will be put in. That's another question they had. And as we spoke, okay, we have Mike, don't want to get his name, whole name, Mike, two years, he's a two-year person in Parks and Recreation. And then we have Matt, which is ten months in. We have eight employees and forty-eight parks. So can you imagine having those parks groomed and nurtured with just eight people? So I'm looking for the city to step up and do, I guess, do some harness, or we put some money in our budget for Parks and Rec, because those are some of the most beautiful places you could ever want to go, but if they're not managed and taken care of properly, it becomes a eyesore. So I'd like to see something happen during the budget season with them, and it is, again, Black History. And I have a few people that I would like to talk about. That is Mr. Emerson Holloway, who was the first African-American who was on Wycomico County Council. He has a park named after him in the, behind the Blue Street Projects. That big park was named after Mr. Emerson Holloway. He was an educator, very, very intelligent. He didn't live long after he had, did his tenure, I don't even think he completed his tenure in the council, but he was our first African-American male, first African-American person to even sit on the council. They also, we have street signs, and I had a discussion Friday about some of this, we had a Black History program in the Chipman Cultural Center, and I explained to the kids about the street naming and the honoring of different persons in our community who have been very adamant about community service, been active, even if it was a pastor, we have Bishop James Green, which is on Northwest Over Drive. The street was named after him, in honor of him. We also have Bishop Urey, James Urey, who I think is Burton Street, that part of that was named after himself. These people are no longer living, and we also have Clinton Store Funeral Home, which that was named. A matter of fact, the county didn't even have an ordinance to name these honorary street names. And I worked with them and pushed them for a whole entire year until we got this established. And we do have it established, and I think that we should use it because not only for Black History, but for any history. We have prevalent history here, and we need to let it be known, let people see the history that we have here, because we do have a lot of history here. And it's not just Black History. It's Merlin History, and it's world history. So with that being said, you, Sean and I, are Black History.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. So yeah, thank you to my fellow council members, and I don't have too much tonight, but I did receive a couple of emails during the week about cleanups and community cleanups. And I know that, I believe, last week, we had a member of the Green Team and Green SPY, so, and I urged him, and I've been telling people that we have the new website, but that it will be linked on our website so that people can see the community cleanups that are happening, that are happening in the, I'm so sorry.
Hello?
I'm so sorry.
That's okay, go ahead, go ahead. That's what you need to say.
Yes, so we'll, it's because I've spent so much time with Councilwoman, Councilwoman here. So yes, I've told many people about that, about that effort, and that they can find it on the website. Additionally, and this is probably why I, I didn't forget, but I glazed over, we'll use that word, glazed over, is because this past weekend, a member who was, who was, I think, notably known, but Councilman Eric Mays, I know he's been popular on social media, and I think, again, he was kind of avant-garde in his ways of his councilmanship, but it got people thinking about council and kind of what council does and, you know, the jobs of that. And I just want to give my honor to him, because, you know, even though he was against the Green, he did great work for the city of Flint in Michigan. So our regards are with that city. And with that, we'll let Councilwoman Blake end us off here.
Well, a couple things. I do want to talk about the rails and trails, which goes into the bike lanes. I know it's coming, I don't know exactly when, but they're putting together, I guess, a presentation to show you how the rails and trails and the bike lanes go together. There's a, it's a regional project. It reaches from Delaware all the way down to Virginia, and there's a large section of that that is complete, but the presentation should be coming at some point. So I think that'll answer a lot of the questions regarding the bike lanes, the grants, and how the whole project fits into the region. I do want to give an update on the Shoemaker Pond. Concerns, I've been working for, I guess, about four years now or so, and as I had said in a couple meetings ago, there's some CIP money, I think twenty-five thousand dollars that had been set aside for Shoemaker Pond project. The university, it's a biology department, is putting together a proposal for a research project that I think would take place throughout the year, through the seasons of the year, so we can clearly determine what, what's actually in the pond and where it's coming from. They're also going to do some geomapping for us in regards to that pond, and I think that'll be really nice. It's just in the very beginning stages, but this has been a long time coming and putting this together. And then, of course, and for always, if you are healthy enough, please consider donating blood, plasma, and becoming an organ donor.
Thank you. Thank you. One more.
Oh, yes. We have a marvelous seven-eleven. The Joan and I went to the grand opening Friday, and we have something to be proud of, and it is in my district, District One. So I can see that we're having some renovations and some revitalization in our community, and I am proud and I'm glad of it. And I would like to see more in our city.
Yes.
Oh, and the mayor was there, yes, it was.
I'm going back to the chicken tonight.
Yeah.
They got good slurpees, Sam.
I was telling someone, I was excited, again, we were excited while we were there because we were speaking with the staff there, and they were excited to come here to Salisbury. We were excited to have them here, but it was the, I think that was the most fun I've had at a ribbon, at a, at a, at a grand opening, because they had a DJ and they had a chicken and, and a slurpee.
I remember their slurpees are the bar.
They had all kinds of giveaways, for real.
Absolutely.
The trolley should have, the trolley should have gone by there.
And just, just to end us off, I know that we, we had some discussions last meeting about, you know, different projects in a special meeting, and we did have to, well, administration had to postpone that because we do have our city administrator out of the office. So we're looking forward to having those discussions, some of those discussions in open session, and then we'll have to have some, not in open session because of some things. So we'll receive an update next week on those projects, and we're looking forward to hearing that from administration. So with that being said, we, this meeting is now adjourned.